To have this development, this architectural style to allow multiple buildings for different uses. In other words, there's one that is a main living area, another building that is a kitchen area, another building that is a, that is studies and art studios, another building that might be bedrooms. And the planning department has looked at this for a little while and the fastest way, the best way for them to get it is to have, to get it done within a reasonable period of time is for council to direct that to happen. It would then go through the normal process of the planning department review and actual wording, then brought to the planning commission, then the natural resources committee, and then on to county council without any kind of direction through the planning commission or to the natural resources committee to give any particular flavor, any particular type of, you know, we're not asking them to consider it positively, it's just to, it's just to have it brought forward. In order to do that in a timely manner, sir, we need a motion to amend our agenda today and add that language.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Fluehle, regarding this particular item?
Mr. Chairman, I think this should be done by each individual landowner instead of carte blanche to a whole neighborhood.
Okay.
I have a question. Mr. Fluehle, what's a timely matter?
A timely manner is before I'm no longer on county council. It's going to take quite a while for this to happen, especially if we have to contact each individual owner ahead of time to seek their approval beforehand. If we have this just as an option for people, it's not requiring any kind of development. And of course, property owners nearby would certainly be able to, to not develop in that pattern. It's just, these lots are very large, very spaced out. So with development in this pattern and one lot wouldn't necessarily, would not impact any other houses in the area. I don't see this as something that is required for each individual property owner to have that kind of say, especially since there are already lots out there that have this type of architectural design.
So if we don't impose a 90-day timely decision, as you suggest, what would it normally take for them to come to a decision?
Well, if we, if we, if we had to request a, or if Spring Island had to ask each individual property owner, sir, it could take six months or a year that way. And this is, this is the easiest way to do it. Again, especially considering there's already this type of development out there. It's just allowing future owners to be able to have it.
Don't you think that we should stick to our normal process and procedure and have this delivered to a committee and then get some input from the executive staff on what they?
Well, this is, this is simply directing staff to move forward with it. It's, it's not, it's not pre-deciding this matter.
It's not okay if I finish.
I'm sorry.
I was asking if you thought it's outside the ordinary as opposed to having it go to the committee, then having the executive staff make a recommendation or provide an opinion, and then have it come to the council, having already been discussed and heard by people, rather than just dropping it on the table when no one really knows anything about it.
Well, yeah.
Well, if I might, the way, the way I see it is this is simply directing staff to work on the issue. It's not pre-deciding it in any way. There's going to be plenty of time for the arguments for or against. It just moves it forward at a, at a pace. Did I hear somebody wanting to?
Yeah, that was me, Councilmember Fluehle, and Eric. The ordinance has three mechanisms for rezonings to occur. One of those is to be a applicant.
You're favoring in and out, Eric.
Oh, I'm sorry. One of the, one of the three areas is for there to be an applicant-initiated rezoning, then for the county council to initiate a rezoning, or the planning.
I missed almost everything you said.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what's going on with my mic. I'm trying to talk into it.
Not hearing you.
And then the third way is for the planning commission.
Can y'all hear me? Okay.
Yeah, we can hear you. Okay. Well, Mr., can you hear me?
What's the third way you want to say?
Planning commission.
Planning commission. Which is that working on it now?
No, they are not. It was originally scheduled to come before natural resources for you, for natural resources to discuss the initiation of the rezoning, but that is out of character with the requirements of the code. The council needs to initiate the rezoning before any committee or planning commission review takes place. Once the rezoning is initiated, then the planning commission will hear it in October. Natural resources would hear it in November, and then you all would start taking it up in November for three readings. So hopefully, it could finish by the end of December underneath that scenario.
So this isn't an unusual request?
It is an unusual reason to initiate a rezoning because typically rezonings are initiated by political bodies to carry out the purpose and intent of a comprehensive plan. In this particular case, it's a little unusual in the fact that the neighborhood has approached the county about doing a text amendment and a rezoning, but they do not want to go through the process and take the time to try to get all the property owners to agree to the rezoning of their property. They're asking the council to initiate that through this mechanism with Councilmember Fluehle. So we do not know what type of confusion will be created if you all do this, and I just want to be clear on that. It may be fine, their communication may have been, may have been carried out by the attorneys who are working on this for the neighborhood, but it's certainly a typical process. So we have to be very clear as to what your motion is going to be. So is there a way you can email the motion to Mr. Kevney so that we can have it stated clearly by you and we understand exactly what the motion should be?
Sure. I'll go ahead and work on that as we move forward with the various meetings. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. And, yes, Ms. Howes.
Number 20 on our agenda item, there, that ordinance still includes the Spanish Moss Trail, and we had voted at the public facilities meeting to delete any reference to the Spanish Moss Trail. Just want to make everyone aware of that. You corrected that today? Okay.
I was going to bring up the same thing.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A small point on number 21.
I'm sorry, say again, Chris. On 21, there is a typo?
Yep.
And what's the typo?
Second line, procure at the end.
Oh, yes. Okay, thank you. Any other items? I believe our agenda is now set. Okay. We've approved the agenda. We've talked about the agenda for, well, he'll make that motion when we come to the actual agenda. He's putting together the motion now. No, that won't happen until the actual council meeting. Okay. We are now ready for a motion to go into executive session. The executive session will be pursuant to South Carolina Code 30-40A2 for the receipt of legal advice where the advice relates to pending claims, which are covered by attorney-client privilege, the detention center litigation, and also discussion of negotiations incident to proposed contractual arrangements and potential sale of real property known as King Street and Wilmington Street. May I have such a motion for the executive session? Oh, and if I turn the page, there is a third one. Thank you very much. Pursuant to the code, as stated, we are going to discuss negotiations incident to proposed contractual arrangements and proposed purchase, acquisition of real property known as Melrose Landing, Defusky Ferry Landing. So now may I have motion for those three items? Mr. McKellen makes the motion?
Second.
Mr. Rodman makes the second. It is duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be done as unanimous without objection. We will be moving across the hallway. It is now 4:44. The council meeting does start at 6:00. We do have a fairly lengthy executive session, but we will start the council meeting at 6:00. So we are now in executive session.
Sarah, which one am I using to get on the Zoom meeting? Yeah, because mine said... We are back from the executive session in the caucus meeting. We had a lengthy discussion about items that were in the closed session. There will be items for us to consider on the council agenda coming out of caucus. Is there any further discussion about anything in the caucus meeting? Seeing none, the caucus meeting is now adjourned. We will have about five minutes to change over and we will begin the council meeting. We will have about five minutes to change over and we will begin the council meeting. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to the county council meeting of Monday, September 12th. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We are a hybrid group this evening, which means, as you can see, several of us are in the chambers here, but we do have two council members online. Would the clerk please call the roll to indicate that we do have a quorum?
Chairman Passamit?
Present.
Vice Chairman Somerville?
Present.
Councilmember Glover?
Here.
Councilmember Hervishan?
Present.
Councilmember Rodman?
Present.
Councilmember Howard?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, present.
Councilmember McAllen?
Here.
Councilmember Dawson is absent. Councilmember Flueheling?
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. This evening, we have quite a bit on the agenda. I know that there are individuals who wish to speak. We do have two times that individuals can speak. The first, citizen comments, which are item number 10, will be for those items that are on the agenda. Please be aware of that. The second is at the end of the meeting where you can address anything that concerns you with county council. We're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation, which will be done by Vice Chairman Somerville. We are then going to ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence. Mr. Dawson is not with us this evening because today was the funeral for his wife. So, would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lord, if you bow your heads, please. Lord, make us instruments of your peace. Where there is hatred, let us bring love. Where there is offense, let us bring pardon. Where there is discord, let us bring union. Where there is error, let us bring truth. Where there is doubt, let us bring faith. Where there is despair, let us bring hope. Where there is darkness, let us bring light. Where there is sadness, let us bring joy. Oh, master, let us not seek as much to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in forgiving that one receives, it is in self-forgetting that one finds, it is in pardoning that one is pardoned, it is in dying that one is raised to eternal life. Amen.
Amen. Please remain for a moment of silence. Thank you. Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. I will ask a member of council to make a motion to approve tonight's county council agenda. Mr. Rodman makes the motion. A second, please.
A second.
Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Mr. Flueheling?
Thanks. Just chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend that motion for approval to add an agenda item regarding change of zoning and map amendments for Spring Island.
Okay, the motion that has been sent to us so that the public is aware of what Mr. Flueheling is talking about, he would like to move to direct staff to draft appropriate CDC language regarding T2 rural low zoning to allow multiple accessory structures and to change the zoning for Spring Island to T2 rural low and to forward these changes through the normal process. A second, Mr. Chairman.
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay, so it is duly motioned by Mr. Flueheling and Mr. Glover makes the second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This was discussed at the natural resource agenda meeting. I do not feel it's appropriate. I think each individual landowner should bring their requests forward. I understand that Spring Island has very large lots, but we have other similar developments in Beaufort County, maybe not many, but a few. But this also has a lot of questions in my mind that it needs to be vetted publicly by each individual landowner on why they need the accessory buildings.
Mr. Chairman, at this point, we're talking about the agenda amendment and if we want to get into the pluses and minuses of the motion, I think we need to approve this as an agenda add-on right now in order to discuss it.
Well, that's why we're having a discussion whether we are going to approve this as an amendment. It has been seconded, yes. Any other comments?
I have one. I think there's a process and a procedure in place to handle this properly, and I'm not sure this is the correct way to do that. I agree with Councilwoman Howard that there is a more appropriate.
Again, again, Mr. Chairman, other members are arguing the point of the motion, not the amendment to the agenda. We just want to bring this up so we can actually have a discussion on it.
This will require two-thirds of council to be approved. There are 10 members in attendance. It will require seven of the individuals to make this as an item to be included on tonight's agenda. I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll on the amendment. We'll begin with Mr. Flueheling because he made the motion. Mr. Glover will be second. He made the second, and then the rest of council will weigh in. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Flueheling?
Thank you. I vote in favor of the motion to amend.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes, for sake of discussion.
Councilmember McAllen?
No.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Howard?
No.
Councilmember Rodman?
Yes, for discussion.
Councilmember Hervishan?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Somerville?
No.
Chairman Passamit?
No.
Six-four.
Motion fails. We're back to the original motion.
No, sorry, it passed.
Excuse me, that was, the motion passed, sir.
It passed, six-four.
No, it required two-thirds.
Oh, 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 sorry, sorry, two-thirds.
Requires seven.
You're correct.
Thank you. All right, we're back to the approval of the agenda. It has been duly motioned and seconded. This will be done without objection. Are there any objections? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. I'd like a motion for the approval of the minutes of August the 8th. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rodman makes the motion. A second, please.
Second.
Mr. McKellen makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Is there any objection to approving the minutes? Seeing no objection, the minutes are approved. Our administrator's report will not be done this evening so that we can get to the business that is at hand. Next on the schedule is a presentation of a proclamation recognizing September as recovery month. Mr. McKellen, you will make that proclamation?
I will.
Thank you.
I know there are members in the audience here who have participated in that. They're correct first responders. I'm just here. Here, sir. Come on over here, please.
Good evening, good evening. Thank you for coming. I'm just going to read this, have you stand behind me, and then I'm going to make the presentation of the proclamation to you. This is a proclamation that states, whereas behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall health and recovery is a process through which people are able to improve their overall wellness, both physically and emotionally, live increasingly self-directed lives, and strive to fulfill their greatest potential. And whereas substance use disorders, including opioid use disorder and co-occurring disorders, affect all communities nationwide, but with commitment and support, people with these disorders can seek help and treatment, they can recover, and they can achieve healthy lifestyles and lead rewarding lives in recovery. And whereas the focus of National Recovery Month is to combat stigma and resolve misconceptions associated with addiction, and to celebrate their journey with the theme, "Join the Voices for Recovery: Celebrating Connections." Recovery Month spreads the message that prevention and treatment are effective, and people can and do recover every day. And whereas the impact of substance use disorders and opiate overdoses is apparent locally, with an estimated 20,000 people in Beaufort County affected by a substance use disorder, and over 100,000 United States citizens lost their lives to an overdose, to an opiate overdose alone last year. Through National Recovery Month, people become more aware and able to recognize the signs of substance use disorders, as people in need of treatment and recovery services are encouraged to seek help or are provided outreach by the Beaufort County First Responder Team who are standing behind me. Whereas the National Recovery Month observance seeks to improve the lives of those affected by substance use disorders by raising awareness of these disorders and educating communities about the effect of treatment, available recovery services, and the danger of stigma. For the above reasons, the Beaufort County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Department and the Beaufort County First Responder Team is asking our entire community to join partners and stakeholders across the Palmetto State in celebrating September as National Recovery Month and an observation of the 33rd anniversary of Recovery Month. And now therefore be it resolved that Beaufort County Council does hereby proclaim September 2022 as Recovery Month in Beaufort County. I'd just like to add a few words to that. We are facing, in this country, in this state, and in this county, a terrible situation with regard to opioid overdoses, particularly those with fentanyl. It's affecting our children, our young people, perhaps more than others, because they may be poly-drug users, and they may find that they're obtaining drugs that are their preference to use that are not, by their knowledge, opioid, contain opioids. Unfortunately, these days, if people are using marijuana or cocaine or methamphetamine, the people who are purveyors of that sometimes include fentanyl in there simply because it's available, and they think people are seeking it. So, a lot of people are quite surprised when they discover that fentanyl is contained in the drug that they're using, and sometimes that surprise results in death. A statement made here says, "Hey, I just wanted to say thanks. If it wasn't for you telling me your story, I would not have got help. I don't trust no one, never have, but I could see in your eyes you really wanted to help me. You straight saved my life, and I will be forever grateful for you." In Beaufort County in 2020, there were 30 drug overdose fatalities related to opioids and 254 drug overdose hospitalizations. The individual quoted above was one of 29 county residents who were helped recently by the Beaufort County First Responders Project that began in October of 2021. It's just one of several notes that this team behind me received. This program was created to help curb opiate abuse and opiate overdoses, and in South Carolina last year, more people died from drug overdoses than they did from automobile accidents. In 2020, 1,734 South Carolinians died from a drug overdose, and there were 1,066 traffic fatalities. Of those 1,734 drug deaths, 1,400 were related to opioids, and 1,100 involved fentanyl. So, I wanted to add those comments and take a moment to thank you very much for the good work that you do with Mike and Gradwell.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Chris. Do you want to say a few words? Please, go ahead. Fewer.
Very few. First of all, let me say thank you. On behalf of our team, conduct our part built, if you will, by firefighters from Burton, ladies' Allen-St. Allen Fire District, paramedic from Beaufort County EMS, and surely our friends and neighbors at the Beaufort County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Division. We thank the county for supporting this. We are leap years ahead of our colleagues around the United States. If we travel to learn how to do our job better, we find that we have some very forward thinkers in our leadership, both at the council level as well as our staff level. And because of that, our team exists, and because of the efforts that we're able to do and the support that we're provided by both our residents and surely our staff and the council, we are absolutely making a difference in this county, and we thank you for the opportunity to do that.
Occasionally, I have the unique opportunity to present these proclamations, which I don't know if you can tell, I really love to do. I really love to do it. It's a great opportunity for us to recognize people in our community who are doing very important work for all of us, and oftentimes, no one bothers to say thank you or recognize those important efforts. Tonight, it's with great pleasure that I bring a friend of all of ours up here tonight, sitting right here, Eleanor Lightsey. Would you join me up here, Eleanor, for a moment? Everyone is smiling at her because everybody here knows her. Everybody in the front of the room knows her for sure. And I'm going to read this, as embarrassing as this may be, Eleanor, I'm going to read it. It's a proclamation to you for life and service. Whereas Eleanor Lightsey received an undergraduate degree from the University of South Carolina and a master's degree in business administration from Winthrop University. And whereas Eleanor served in positions as the recording clerk and the bill clerk on the desk in the South Carolina House of Representatives for eight sessions, and authored South Carolina's legislative process, more recently she co-authored South Carolina Real Estate Practice and Law. And whereas Eleanor served our state as a program coordinator for the Office of Real Estate and Building Code Professions for the Department of Labor Licensing and Regulation, where she was called upon to assist in drafting regulations for the commission, and was responsible for developing and managing educational and testing programs for licensees. And whereas in 2000, Eleanor became the Executive Vice President of the Hilton Head Area Association of Realtors. Did you know you did all these things? Where for eight years she helped grow the association from 400 to 1,200 members, as well as developing 42 programs and services to aid the members. Now, here's where we all appreciate what you've done. Whereas upon leaving the Association of Realtors, Eleanor became the Business Manager for the Low Country Inside Track Limited, which is not a racing organization. Where she was responsible.
Where she was responsible for reporting on local and county government throughout Jasper and Beaufort Counties by attending 55 county and town meetings a year of various councils and committees. And whereas Eleanor continued to serve the Low Country through her participation on various boards, such as the South Island Public Service District Board, Programs for Exceptional People, the Forest Beach Owners Association, the Board of Osprey Village, Community Vision of Hilton Head, the Low Country Autism Foundation, I must be very tired, Hilton Head Heroes, Safe Harbor, and Turtle Trackers. And whereas Eleanor has spent her professional career and personal life serving the residents and citizens of the great state of South Carolina, as well as the communities of Columbia, Hilton Head Island, and greater Beaufort County. Now therefore be it resolved that Beaufort County Council recognizes Eleanor Lightsey for her commitment and dedication to the great state of South Carolina, in particular the Low Country, making Beaufort County a better place to live, to work, and to play. You made him very happy.
Yes.
Thank you very much. It means so much to me to be here. Let's let Chris take a photo. Okay, thanks, Chris. Thank you very much. Welcome. Eleanor says you can all have more seats now.
This is quite a surprise. My son and some other family members are here today, and my friend Mira evidently is responsible for telecasting this proclamation recognition. It has been so wonderful working with dedicated public servants like Beaufort County has, and I will miss it, and thank you for the honor. Where's the check?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to get through all of these. I must have another piece of paper over there. Glad you're here. Believe, yes, sure. Bye, ladies. Thanks for coming. Don't stop off anywhere. There has been a lot of discussion in government and outside of government recently about affordable and attainable housing, and the very important work that we must undertake to ensure that we can have a successful program, particularly as it relates to workforce housing. So tonight, we're going to recognize some of the people who have participated privately in putting together affordable and attainable housing for their employees and for other members of the community on Hilton Head. As you will see as I read through this, some of the people here are pioneers in this work. Others have joined recently, but have joined just as effectively as others have. So tonight, we're going to recognize a real pioneer, a fellow by the name of Thomas Barnwell, who's sitting right over here. Tom, would you join me up here for a moment? Tom is a real pioneer in affordable housing and in other community service activities on Hilton Head. Tom began his community organization activities with program planning, federal program orientation and implementation while he was at the Penn Center. His community service continued when he held positions as Assistant Director of Beaufort-Jasper-Hampton Economic Opportunity Commission. Then he was the Executive Director of Beaufort-Jasper-Hampton Comprehensive Health Services. And then he was the Regional Director of National Consumer Cooperative Bank, the Charleston Branch. Tom has been very active in securing affordable housing, healthcare, and employment for the natives of Hilton Head Island. He's a well-recognized land developer and a private business owner of rental properties. When I say Tom is a pioneer, he and his wife Susan have been very active. Susan's out here tonight, very active in constructing affordable and attainable housing. Tom and Susan's first project was Squire Pope Mobile Home Park, which was developed in 1970. Excuse me a second. In 1978, he then began another project in 1983 called the Silby Tub Apartments. And there's a great story for the name Silby Tub, because I didn't know what it was, so I asked him the other day on the phone, "What is it?" And he told me at length what it was. And as a great aficionado of history, what he told me almost moved me to tears. He's also developed the Cedar Well Apartments in 1989 and 1990. He also developed with Susan Wildhorse Court in 1994 and 96, and Cotton Point in 1998 and 2000, all affordable and attainable housing for people on Hilton Head. Tom has been, as you can tell, very busy, and I don't think he is finished just yet. Tom, if you would stay up here with me just for a moment, I'm going to invite some other people up, but I would like to give you this presentation, a proclamation that is made out to you for leading the way and setting the example regarding safe, stable, and affordable housing for all residents. And there, it's been resolved by County Council of Beaufort County that we would like to recognize you for your selflessness, your ingenuity, and the resources you've used to provide attainable workforce housing on Hilton Head Island. So for that, thank you very much. I have another proclamation. This one is for Kevin Carter. Kevin Carter is pretty new to our community. Kevin is the owner of Hilton Head Health and Wellness. He came here in 2016 and went to the facility, and then a year later, he liked it there so much, he bought the place. And he has decided that there are, that there's a need for affordable housing here in this community, and in particular for his, members of his own workforce. So he has invested $3 million recently into Hilton Head, and he has put together 19 properties that contain 26 bedrooms. He believes that about 35% of the employees at his workplace are using those affordable housing residences and paying approximately $600 per bedroom. He has plans to continue to invest in the, in the community. Kevin is not here tonight because he works primarily in Charlotte, North Carolina, but Jill Boyd, who is here, I'd like to invite Jill up. Jill is the General Manager of Hilton Head Health and Wellness. Those, sorry. That's right. And I think the Senior Vice President is here as well somewhere. Oh, there she is. Hi, Jill. That's right. The General Manager and Senior Vice President. You may remember Jill, because Jill was a partner in Michael Anthony's many, many years ago. And if those of you who have eaten there, went to the desk when you went in the door, there was Jill standing there extending a warm welcome. She left that quite some time ago, and has been over there now about 13 years, right?
10 years.
10 years? Sorry. 10 years at Hilton Head Wealth, which she's very happy. So I'm going to give you Kevin Carter's proclamation, and it reads pretty similarly to the one that I just gave to Tom Barnwell. It says that Kevin Carter is leading the way and setting the example regarding safe, stable, and affordable housing for all residents. And now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Beaufort County that this council wishes to recognize Kevin Carter for his selflessness, ingenuity, and the resources he used to provide attainable workforce housing on Hilton Head Island.
First, let me say Eleanor was a really hard act to follow. First and foremost, what an amazing woman. I want to say thank you to the councilman, the county, the city officials, and the administrative. We have been working with all of you diligently to get our licensing and to be able to get our permits and move forward, and we are thrilled to be part of this solution of getting some affordable housing for the workforce. So we no longer have to complain in the restaurant about why there's no help. So looking forward to resolving it with all of you. Thank you so very much. Hilton Head Health is really proud.
They're going to stay up here for a while. I have one more, and then I'm finished, I promise. This is a, an award, a proclamation to some people who are very well-known on Hilton Head and who are very good friends of mine accidentally. I've known them for probably over a decade. It's JR and Leslie Richardson. Would you be kind enough to come up here and join me? I'm going to just read this and give you this, and then Chris is going to come over and take some photos, okay? JR and Leslie have been providing affordable workforce housing on Hilton Head since 2019. To help combat the workforce housing shortage on Hilton Head, the Richardson Group, which is run by JR and Leslie, converted a former commercial building at One Park Lane into single and double occupancy residential units. Previously home to Carswell Insurance, the 8,800-square-foot building has been vacant for more than five years, while surrounding businesses struggle to find homes for their workers. In total, the building can house 38 people in apartments that offer Wi-Fi, 55-inch televisions, and computer workspaces. The units are fully rented. They have also put some additional units over on the building that the Hilton Head Orchestra is in over by Lagoon Road near Caligny Circle, and I know that both JR and Leslie continue to look for other opportunities on Hilton Head. So on behalf of council, I'd like to present you with this proclamation that says that JR and Leslie Richardson are leading the way in setting the example regarding safe, stable, and affordable housing for all residents. And now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Beaufort County, this council hereby wishes to recognize JR and Leslie Richardson for their selflessness, their ingenuity, and the resources they've used to provide attainable workforce housing on Hilton Head Island. There you are. Thank you very much.
I'll just say that this is quite unexpected, but we really appreciate it. It's not our thing to be out front with these kind of things, but we actually have three, actually three and four projects in process right now, and it was the last thing we expected. So it's our passionate belief that people should be able to live close to where they work, and in doing that, what we're trying to do is accomplish it. And it's going to take all of us, both private and public, to make that happen. And you can do it in these small pieces, but we have like 3,000 units over, just on Hilton Head that are short, and it's going to take a lot of help to help make that happen. So we have to work together. But together, we can get it done, and I just want to thank you for this honor. I appreciate it very much, and thank you all.
I was going to have everybody speak later, but if I could have Tom Barnwell come up, and I didn't give him an opportunity to say anything. So Tom, could you come up to the microphone and make some remarks? Thank you.
I'd like to begin by saying good evening or good afternoon to all present, and to the chairman, as well as all council members, including my, or our council representative. Sometimes I think he's mine, Mr. McKellen, and other housing providers who are here as well. Would like to thank all of you for this great honor this evening, and of course, in thanking, I will have to thank the Lord for life, because I'm a very newcomer. I've only been on Hilton Head now 87 years. And for those of you who don't know me, now you know how long I have been here. My parents were fortunate to buy land, and of course, I have to especially thank my grandparents and my great-grandparents, and they were able to buy land. And of course, my great-grandparents, after leaving Mitchellville, they were able to buy land in areas of Hilton Head. I would also like to thank my wife Susan, who's not here, who have worked very close with me in this process, as well as I'd like to thank my three children, and two of them are here this evening, Curtis and Paulette, as well as Jason. He's not here. But my, one of my great-grandchildren, Christopher Ramirez, is here, over there, in this room. I'd also like to thank my late cousin Ruth and Cor Jones, who really allowed me the opportunity to purchase land that their parents purchased when they were children. I'd like also to extend the thanks to those architects, the surveyors, the land planners, and especially to Mr. William Fishborn, who was the contractor for me in many of my land development activities. I would also like to thank the legal firms that I employed. All of them were fully paid. I must mention that. And I would really, really say thank you to County Council, because I didn't think anybody recognized the fact that I, along with my family, have developed 33 acres of land on Hilton Head in development, and we have a total of 100, what he mentioned, is a total of 100 units on Hilton Head Island. And for that, I would like to also say that I would like to give you, the council, something that you don't have, and it may be something that your archives could really share with council members, and it's the synopsis that I did back in May 20th, 2014. This is a surprise. He didn't know I was going to do this. This is the white paper that I did for the Heritage Library and Coastal Discovery Museum in May 20th, 2014, the Hilton Head Fishing Cooperative BASF Council.
Thank you, Tom.
It's yours.
Appreciate it. Chris, Chris, you want to stand up? I hear you. I'm strong enough, and I'll get my back because I'm tall. Tell me when to stand up.
You always stand up.
Okay, thank you all very much. Before we go to our citizen comments, as I said, the first part of our agenda, citizen comments, will be for those items that are on the agenda. The second one would be to address any issue.
The second one would be to address any issue. I know several of you are here to talk about Highway 278. I'm going to read something to you. It will be posted on our website. It will be given to the newspapers and any other media that wishes to have it. For the last four years, Beaufort County and Hilton Head have gathered initial thoughts, conducted multiple studies, listened to community input, and were presented with 17 alternatives to address the U.S. 278 corridor that goes between Moss Creek in Bluffton and Spanish Wells Road on Hilton Head Island. As a result of the vetting process, one alternative was chosen. That one preferred alternative was then refined based upon more community feedback and incorporated most of the recommendations from a study commissioned by the town of Hilton Head. So where are we now? Beaufort County is the lead agency for the project and has signed an IGA, which is an intergovernmental agreement that holds the county responsible for starting the project by 2024 and completing the project by 2028. Two-thirds of the county project cannot and will not be changed, no matter how many additional studies we do. The bridge will start at Moss Creek, travel across the intercoastal waterway to Pinckney Island, cross Skull Creek, and proceed to Windmill Harbor. The federal guidelines are non-negotiable since the project crosses the intercoastal waterway and the Pinckney Island National Wildlife Refuge. We do have flexibility for the final mile of the project within the town limits. We believe the current plan for the one-mile stretch through the Stony Community is good. As the project moves forward, we are willing to continue to accept more feedback through the design phase and will work with local and state representatives to secure the extra funding for any changes that will be necessary. The end-to-end study proposed by the town of Hilton Head will only strengthen the corridor from Windmill Harbor through the Cross Island Expressway. We welcome this feedback for inclusion during the final design phase and to identify future projects that will continue to improve the commute times for all Beaufort County residents who live, work, and play on Hilton Head. However, we cannot hold this project up any longer. It is time to move forward and stay on the current timeline. We cannot risk hundreds of millions of dollars when Beaufort County voters approve the project in 2018. Currently, 95% of the project approves, is indifferent, or just wants us to build the bridge and the whole corridor. A final attempt is being made by the staff of the county and the town of Hilton Head to finalize a memorandum of understanding that will allow this project to move forward with feedback from the town of Hilton Head. Since the final MOU was not completed in time for the Beaufort County Council to take action at this meeting, there is no item on the agenda. The Beaufort Council will discuss the MOU at the September 19 Public Facilities Committee meeting, and if approved, will move forward to the full council on September 26. I call on the elected leaders of Hilton Head to read every line of the proposed MOU and see that the compromises have been made and the proposed MOU strengthens our relationship between the two professional staffs and creates the best possible outcome for all our residents. I hope to see this MOU on the next council, Town Council, agenda for discussion and approval so that we can move forward with this critically important project for all Beaufort County Citizen comments. I see from those who have signed up, there are people who wish to discuss the agenda item about the Melrose Landing, and others would like to talk about the pathways. Those seem to be the two most prevalent ones. We do only have 15 minutes. When you come to the podium, please be as brief as you possibly can. Stay within the three-minute timeline. If there are several people that want to speak on the issue and that one person has collectively said what you want to say, it'll give us a chance for the others because we have a fairly large agenda, and I know people don't want to stay here all night. So about the ferry, who would like to speak first about the ferry? There are three people, Beth, Leann, and John. You will have three minutes. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, and thanks for having me. My name is Beth McIntyre, and I'm a resident of Defuski Island and the Secretary of Defuski Island Council. I'm here today as a resident and writer of the county ferry. The discussion of condemnation of Melrose Landing has generated a lot of attention on the island, and I'm here to express my opinions. Defuski Island's a very special place surrounded on all sides by development, and yet we remain undeveloped. Our 450-year-round residents are diverse with wide-ranging origins, ages, races, and political leanings. The logistics of living on Defuski are challenging. With its lack of critical amenities, the island can be a difficult place to live. How you cope with the logistics of island life depends on where you live. If you live in Hague Point, you pay for 24/7 water transportation. For the rest of the island, you either buy into Hague Point Club, which is extremely expensive. You either have your own boat, you take private transport, or you ride the county ferry. My family and I ride the county ferry. For those of us that ride the county ferry, our relationship with the ferry service and the men and women who provide it is different than if you live at Hague Point. For Hague Point residents, the ferry is a service they pay for, and the men and women who run it are their employees. Residents that ride the county boat rely on those services and the men and women who provide it as a critical link in the island's chain of logistics that enable us to live here. This includes our link to health care, emergency services, food, and other basic necessities. It also provides a critical link to each other. For residents, it is our time to catch up on island information and concerns. I'm sure you'll hear from a lot of people for and against condemnation. Make sure that those you are hearing from, who would have you vote against county ownership, actually ride the county ferry. Some of the most vocal of those against county ownership have access to the Hague Point boats and would never or have ever ridden the county ferry. Some have financial interests tied up with Whitestone. Most of the vocal ones are not even full-time residents and are not voting here. As you debate about these important matters, know that for us who ride the county ferry, it isn't just about the transportation that's provided. It is our critical link to services we need, the link for the 200,000 visitors who came to us last year. And it is also our link to each other. By allowing the service to be taken over by a private owner, you are in effect allowing one of the most important aspects of island life to be at the whims of private enterprise. As you go about your deliberations and those with financial interests lobby for your support, remember that for those who ride the county ferry, this is an issue that transcends all other considerations. It is about a way of life that for some of us is only made possible by public transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Leann or John?
Hi, my name is Leann Coulter, and I'm a member of the Defuski Island Council. On August 5th of 2022, the Defuski Island Council voted to support Beaufort County's effort to obtain ownership of the Melrose Landing in any manner it deemed efficient and expedient. The landing is the transportation center for the entire island. It is critical that it, that the landing remain publicly owned. Thank you.
John? Any further things to add?
Good evening. I'm John Shardner, and I'm also with the Defuski Island Council. I'm going to ask that the council, Beaufort County Council, to lay their decision on the purchase or the condemnation of the ferry dock. I have submitted a proposal to the county through my representative Mark Lawson and Eric Greenway to develop my own embarkation center for the county. I'm in the process of getting, purchasing the land. The permits are, been talked about through the county and through the OFMC, and we just need more time to do it. I think, as my colleagues on the council have said, there is importance of getting this matter right, and so asking to delay, I think, would be appropriate at this time. And also, it gives Whitestone an opportunity to cover bases also. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we're going to move to those who want to speak about item number 20 on the agenda, which is the golf carts to use multi-use paths. Karen? Okay.
My name is Frank Bevel, and I'll get right to it. When the pathways were first built in Bluffton, and I talked to Hank Johnson to verify it, the pathway was built for pedestrians and cyclists. That was it. There was no consideration about golf carts because they serve people who play golf. Then in 2018, when the STIP went in for an expansion of the Bluffton Parkway and the other pathways, it also clearly said that what we want is money for pathways that are to serve bicyclists and pedestrians. Several of us served, about 20 of us, served on a committee that developed a plan for pathways in Beaufort County. It was approved by every municipality, Locog, and you as a county. It includes bicyclists and pedestrians only. So we in Hilton Head only have, we don't allow motorized vehicles on any of our pathways. They are very disruptive, and they affect disadvantaged people, especially some of our native islanders where they have golf carts every once in a while, renegades, kids hot-dogging, and they're afraid to go on the pathways. It's not right. These pathways were built and designed for cyclists and pedestrians. They were built for people to walk their dogs, to walk their kids on strollers, these kind of things. And by allowing a few people to ride heavy, fast-riding, expensive golf carts on facilities built for other purposes, basically is infringing and tramping on the rights of bikers and the pedestrians that were originally built for all through the history. This just isn't right. The other elephant in the room is safety. It just isn't safe. You don't know what it's like when you're on a bike with pedestrians nearby and a golf cart comes at you. Who yields? I can tell you, the golf cart doesn't yield. And very often, the golf cart comes from a place that they had a few pops so they don't get a DUI, and they're driving their golf cart. Karen?
Thank you. Good evening. I live in Sun City. My name is Karen Heitman. I am a past president of Sun City Cyclers, and I founded a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization about 15 years ago that we called Greater Bluffton Pathways. Its purpose was to find the funding for multi-use pathways that would connect Sun City with the Greater Bluffton area, as well as provide safe places for families and students to walk and bike to school, church, or shopping. For safety reasons, I feel that motorized vehicles, and specifically golf carts, should not be allowed to use our Bluffton Parkway, Route 170, and Buckwalter Parkway pathways. We would like to see the town of Bluffton and Beaufort County adopt the same municipal code as used on Hilton Head. Pathways were designed to be used by cyclists and pedestrians, not motorized vehicles. When Peachtree City, Georgia, which is a residential suburb of, south of Atlanta, built 90 miles of multi-use pathways in their community, golf cart owners asked to use the pathways, and this was allowed. Soon, the pedestrians and the recreational cyclists stopped using the multi-use pathways because the walkers and the cyclists felt unsafe sharing a pathway with 1,500-pound golf carts. Students began to drive the golf carts to the local high school. The pathways became golf cart pathways, used only by golf carts. During morning and afternoon rush hours when children are walking and biking to school, they should not have to worry about 1,500-pound golf carts that may be traveling 15 or 20 miles an hour on the same pathways. Research is clear. Physical activity promotes brain and cognitive development. It stimulates learning and contributes to improved academic success. Human-powered transportation is healthier for our society, for our environment, for our pocketbooks, and for our physical and mental health. Riding in a golf cart to school will be counterproductive to the National Safe Routes to Schools program objectives. If teenagers are allowed to drive golf carts to and from the high school, soccer fields, and shopping centers, the golf carts may become status symbols and lead to a greater need for police enforcement. Now, you also say that you see cyclists on the roadways instead of on the pathways. This is because they are, A, cyclists, and the bicycle is a vehicle according to South Carolina law. They share the road with cars, but our narrow pathways are not wide enough to allow golf carts nor fast-moving cyclists. So please do not allow motorized vehicles to use our pathways.
Thank you.
Okay, we're just about out of time for our first 15 minutes. Is there a... Stop! This is... Sir, stop! Do you not understand what we're doing? Sit down!
We said at the end of the meeting, everybody could talk.
Most of us don't want to sit here all for hours. We want to get it over with and talk about this agenda item and have our...
It is not an agenda item! Did you not understand?
It's not an agenda item, just a discussion on the bridge. But I think we all need to have that opportunity.
At the end of the meeting! We're trying to get through the public comment about what is on the agenda. Did I not explain that clearly?
You know, just as long as we're going to respect everybody in this room, but we still have to sit here all that time. We should get it over with now so we don't have to sit here through our dinner and through our family times. Why don't you just let everybody get up and start talking and get it over with? Why have you done that? You put the respect, you're disrespecting by putting everything last. Why don't you put the...
Sir, what would you like to talk about?
I'd like to speak about the golf carts on the bike path issue.
Okay. Is there anybody who wants to speak about any other agenda item other than the golf cart path? Yes, ma'am. Which one is it?
Number 18.
Number 18. Please let her go.
Good evening. My name is Linda M. Moyd Hills, and my concern is, number 18, the first reading of an ordinance to provide maintenance work on the private road. My concern is I need clarity on that private road that you are talking about because I own a private road, and I want to know. So that is my concern tonight. And just let me know. I'm going to sit here, and I'm going to hear what you all have to say. So when you get to number 18, please clarify that for me.
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Sir, you will be the last one for the first 15 minutes. Sir, you will be the last one for the first 15 minutes.
Thank you Chairman, excuse me, thank you Chairman Passamit and other council members. My name is Ray Chipollini and I'm here representing 250 members of the Sun City Cyclers Bicycle Club. I'm their advocacy director and I have a background in not only cycling, but also pedestrian safety and advocacy for pedestrians and cyclists. This proposed ordinance, I was dumbfounded when I read it. The purpose of multi-use paths and trails is to ensure the safety of vulnerable road users, pedestrians, walkers, joggers, cyclists, et cetera, by physically separating them from motor vehicles. This ordinance does the exact opposite of protecting vulnerable road users by adding motor vehicles, as defined by South Carolina code, to the very same space that keeps these users safe. Therefore, we vehemently oppose this proposed ordinance. I've got a ton of issues with it, but I'm gonna highlight just four of them. Safety, as a previous speaker said, is the elephant in the room, is not the elephant in the room. Safety is the number one priority. All right? The paths were not built for anything other than pedestrians. Now, I did some measurements, and these paths are seven feet wide, up to nine feet four inches. The average golf cart is four and a half feet wide. Do we want golf carts passing pedestrians, bike riders, and mothers pushing their strollers with only three and a half feet between them? This is ridiculous. It also goes against the original intent of creating the bike paths, as defined by previous speaker. The speed issues, which was brought up, is actually addressed by the U.S. Department of Transportation. The U.S. Department of Transportation advises cyclists with the ability and strength to ride at 18.6 miles an hour to stay off of the multi-use paths and use the existing roadway. All right? Now you want to introduce half-ton motorized golf carts at 25 miles an hour? Where's the logic here? There really isn't. So safety is paramount. As far as transportation for the golf carts, it's already addressed. They can ride on secondary roads. They can ride on any road that has less than 35 mile an hour, 35 miles or less. So that's already been addressed. The other issue, obviously, is costs. The ADA ramps at each intersection are approximately three feet wide. Now, a golf cart is four and a half feet wide. Are you gonna widen these? That's a real cost. As a taxpayer, I want to know that. All right? The other costs, are you gonna widen the paths themselves? We need to know what these costs are, and we need to know before you discuss this ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Can you represent a group? How many people came with you tonight from that booth? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Can I ask a question as well?
Sure.
I'm the one that brought the golf cart ordinance forward. So can I ask you a question as well? In Sun City, do you guys take your golf carts to the shopping complex throughout it? Like Food Lion?
We use the roads.
Correct. Under 35 miles an hour.
Correct.
Do those roads that we are discussing have the same access to those roads of 35 miles an hour and under?
Which roads are you discussing?
The only roads that are up for it right now is Bluffton Parkway and Buckwalter. They are 45 and higher.
They're 45s.
Roads versus pathways. There were no pathways...
Correct, but the statement was golf carts can go on roads 35 miles an hour below, which you guys can take your carts on. Correct. We don't have access to those same 35 mile an hour roads. That's why the discussion's coming.
Saying that you can ride on a pathway...
I was just saying it doesn't solve the issue of 35 mile an hour if you don't have access to 35 mile an hour roads. That was my only point. Yes, that is a law, but there is no access to those neighborhoods to those 35 mile an hour roads.
Can I ask you this then?
Absolutely.
Is the transportation issue your major issue in using golf carts?
Say that one more time.
Is the transportation issue your big issue with allowing golf carts on bike paths?
My issue is connectivity for all residents of Beaufort County.
Let's, we'll discuss this one when it comes up on the agenda. All right.
Thank you.
The statement you just mentioned, the South Park owner is not allowed to go more than three miles away from their home base. So that's where the...
Okay. We're going to end the first citizens' comments. When we come back for that, it's wide open. You can discuss anything with us. Item number 11 is liaison and committee reports. Is there any member of council who wishes to report?
Reading services, no sir.
Mr. Rodman.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, a couple of things on the consent agenda out of public facilities. As you all know, the 170 section between 278 and 462 is very congested, very unsafe. Our county, Jethua County, Hardyville, and DOT have all come together to work on a short-term problem, and that's nearly completion in terms of design, God forbid. And there's an amendment change order for $500,000 to actually add some additional work to that. We have an item, which is the design services for pathways. When the referendum ended, there was an extra $15 million that was collected, and county council is directing that to the pathway projects. And so there's a $3 million contract to increase the design for all of those pathways that we will be adding to that. There's one for $200,000 to actually put a new pathway in on the Bluffton Parkway. There's a one for about $300,000 for, in Beaufort, for doing master planning on Rebo Road. There's a road project over in the area of Ladies Island near the airport for about $2.4 million to repave. And lastly, there's an approval for a process that we've started to use, which is similar to DOT, where we end up identifying a group of engineering firms in a particular specialty so that instead of going quote by quote, we can actually call on those as we need them. So those are the six items, Mr. Chairman, that all came out of public facility.
Thank you. Mr. Lawson.
Yes, from the Finance Committee, we have three items. Approval of award for first triad advisors for financial advisory for Beaufort County debt issues. Second is approval award to buy replacement ambulances for $817,220, and that's for four ambulances. And approval for the ARPA Good Neighbor Program municipality funding requests, total impact $950,000, city of Beaufort $250,000, town of Port Row $500,000, and town of YMC $200,000. And then our next Finance Committee meeting is next Tuesday at 2:00 p.m.
Thank you. Any others? Okay. We will now move to the approval of the consent agenda. May I have such a motion?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman. We approve the consent.
Ms. Howard makes the motion. Mr. McKellen makes the second. For those of you who are in the audience, the consent agenda has gone through committee process. They vetted every one of the items. They usually approve them to move on to county council unanimously, and that's why they are on the consent agenda. There are 12 items. Duly motioned and seconded. This will be done without objection. Are there any objections? I see no objections. The consent agenda is approved. Item number 13, are matters arising out of the caucus executive session. Mr. Glover, I understand you have a motion to move forward.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer a motion that we move to approve, we move to authorize the county administrator to execute any and all documents necessary to sell two parcel of property owned by the county. Those properties are 1407 King Street and 600 Wilmington Street in Beaufort. And this is in an effort to, for county government to work with, private industry to look at workforce housing, as well as affordable housing in the city of Beaufort.
I'd like to second the motion.
Ms. Howard makes the second. Is there any discussion? This agenda item will be approved without objection. Are there any objections? Mr. Hervishan?
Yes, sir.
You object?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any other objection?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Is that all right?
Yes.
Thank you. Could somebody refresh my memory? What was the appraised value of this property that we're attempting to sell?
Does anyone have that answer?
We'll have to get that part, you have to send an email.
Okay. Okay.
I'll go ahead and vote no then on first reading, sir.
Okay.
We followed the county... We followed the county council's direction on this to put properties out for bid. That has occurred and brought you a high bid that you all approved, so...
I do appreciate that, Eric. I'm likely to support this in the long run. I just, without that information, I just wanted to double check it in my mind. I've lost it somewhere in my mind.
Ms. Ward just walked back in. She may know the answer, so we'll try to, hopefully by the end of the discussion, we'll have that answer.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Does that mean you are changing your objection? Mr. Flouelling?
Yeah, I'm gonna change my vote temporarily, sir, if we could. Maybe Ms. Ward will have the information at the tip of her fingers and...
Okay, she does have it.
I apologize, stepped out of the room. There were several appraisals that were completed on this property. Appraisals for King Street ranged from $60,000 to $900,000. And Wilmington Street, Wilmington Street, one appraisal came in at $610,000, and the other one came in at $1.7 million.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Duly motioned and seconded. I indicated that we would do this without objection. We do have one objection on the floor. And Mr. Flouelling, you are now going to be yes.
I'm a yes.
I'll take that as a yes.
I'm gonna get rid of this property.
Okay. So the motion is successful with nine yes and one no. Moving on to item number 14, we're going to have a public hearing and third reading of an ordinance to appropriate funds in order to establish public ownership of the real property with the TMS, which is also known as Melrose Landing. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Lawson makes the motion. A second, please.
A second.
Mr. Glover makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Before we get into discussion, is there any member of the public which is now, you can talk about this, to address this issue? Please come forward, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I'm Robert Vox. I represent the landowner. We have worked rather diligently for the last six weeks with members of staff to try and address this problem, and I think we have done so. The council had a study done as to how to address the issue of a county landing. That property is sometimes known as the Webb Track, which is adjacent to the Melrose Track. You need approximately three years, best we can tell, to get through this process. We have offered to continue the lease to the county, the Melrose Dock. We agreed on all the terms, as far as I can tell. We worked diligently at it. If you proceed with this, and I'm hesitant in saying this because I don't mean it as a threat, but we're not going to simply stand by idly and allow you to take this private property, this private business, and put us out of business. My client has had this property under contract before you got involved in this. We're perfectly willing to accommodate the county, make it available to you at the same times. If you want additional times, we've said that we'd make those available to you. To take private enterprise, put a business out of business, put a company out of business, is simply wrong. It's against the American way. You have alternatives. We think the law is against you on this, and just understand it. I don't, I mean this with all due respect. I've known some of you gentlemen for years, and I don't mean it as a threat. I just simply mean that I have to represent my client, and I will contest this as long as I possibly can. And that's all the way through the Supreme Court, if necessary. We ask that you do the right thing. Simply enter into the lease. I think you've been provided with the lease. You'll have exactly what you want, and you'll have the time to develop your own property and your own dock. Thank you very much.
Is there any other member of the public who wishes to make comment? Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Is there any member of council who wishes to make a comment? Mr. Hervishan?
I'll go first. As a matter of principle, and I've said this at several other meetings, I don't believe in condemnation unless it has an absolute positive last resort, which this clearly is not. So for that reason, I'm against it, but I also believe that this is one of the most, if not the most expensive option that we could go through. And for those reasons, I most definitely do not support this. Thank you.
Mr. Cunningham.
With Chris, I share some of the same beliefs. I think condemnation should be an absolute last resort for us. We have been elected into a position to make these decisions, and to go with the route of condemnation, to me, there has to be no other option. I do believe there is other options. I believe we've been presented with other options. I also think this is wildly expensive, to quote Chris. When this is all said and done, between this property and another property, we're easily looking between $15 to $20 million to get it completed, which, I'm sorry, that is a tough pill to swallow for taxpayers, especially when I believe there are other options.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes, I am actually for this, and I was hoping that there would be an agreement, as Mr. Vox said, but again, it's something that we'll continue to look at, any offers that they have. But we've been using this Melrose Landing, I think, for eight years as the, as the public landing for the ferry going to Defuski. And the reason that you would do a condemnation like this is for the good of the public use. And this is for the good of the public use. This is a time whenever, again, I don't like condemnation as well, however, this is a time that it is for the best, for the majority of folks on Defuski Island, anyone that's going over there for work or back and forth. So again, not something that I like to do, and none of these things are fun decisions to make, but again, it's a decision that is gonna be for the best of the Defuski Island for us to move forward with this.
Any further comments before I call for a vote? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll, please, beginning with Mr. Lawson, who made the motion, and then Mr. Glover, who made the second?
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Mr. Glover, next, please.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Glover?
Yes, I'm speaking, Mark, in his district.
Councilmember Flouelling?
No.
Councilmember McKellen?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hervishan?
No.
Vice Chair Somerville?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes. Motion carries seven yes, three no. Item number 15 is a first reading of an ordinance, amending an ordinance 9910 to further accept details of the conduct of municipal elections from the city of Beaufort by the Board of Voter Registration and elections of Beaufort County. May I have such a motion, please?
I'll make the motion, sir. Suggest that it is by acclamation.
Ms. Howard made the motion, and you will be the second, Mr. Flouelling?
Fair enough.
Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be done without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 16 is a first reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Community Development Code for Echotourism to Clarify Guiding Principles for Echotourism Development and Establish Base Site Area Calculations for Echotourism. and establish base site area calculations for ecotourism development. A motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the motion, a second?
A second.
Mr. Glover makes the second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be accepted without objection for first reading, and I see no objections. Item number seventeen is a first reading of an ordinance to allocate the proceeds from the sale of the Myrtle Business Park to the Economic Development Site and Job Fund. May I have such a motion, please?
So moved, a second.
Mr. Rodman made the motion, Mr. Glover made the second, and we did have a discussion about this, about a change here, that we needed to move this to the Finance Committee for clarification based upon some things that were done by administration, is that not correct? That's where we are? No, we've done sixteen, we are on seventeen. Okay, so I would ask a member of council to amend this motion, to refer this item to the Finance Committee.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hervishon makes the motion. Mr. McKellen makes the second. Discussion. Mr. Glover?
No, I just need to know why we're moving it to Finance and not approving it at this time.
We've done a fiscal analysis that has to be presented to the Finance Committee for recommendation to full council before we take this action.
But it came out of Finance, didn't it?
Yeah, but they didn't have all of the information.
Mr. Chairman, is there any way we can proceed with first reading tonight and have it reviewed at Finance Committee before the second reading?
Well, the, there is an amended motion on the floor, if the motioner and second wishes to.
I don't believe there's been an actual amendment to the motion yet, sir, I think we just have the main motion.
No?
I made the amendment.
You did?
Mr. Hervishon made the amendment.
Who seconded?
Larry.
Mr. McKellen did.
Oh, okay.
And this is a motion to refer it back to the Finance Committee?
That's correct.
Could Mr. O'Toole, he's here, could he speak to this? I'm not too sure I understand exactly what is happening.
Mr. O'Toole is not clear on the actions to be able to speak to this this evening. Some additional information has been brought to light by our Finance Department since the Finance Committee meeting, and we feel that it needs to go back to the Finance Committee for us to clearly indicate that information to the committee so that the committee can potentially reconsider its recommendation to the council in light of that new information.
Reconsider?
Yes.
That is correct. Mr. Hervishon?
Yeah, if I might, I mean, Finance is gonna meet on Monday, and we can take this back up on
Twenty-sixth.
Whatever day that is, the twenty-sixth.
Yes.
I don't know that this item is terribly pressing, so I don't see the issue of sending this back to Finance and doing it right.
Correct.
I think it's pressing in that the Economic Development Committee need to know exactly whether those funds are available to them for planning purposes. But reconsidering, and I think Brian asked the question, could this go forward as first reading? And the staff said no. And so this reconsideration, to me, means that you're thinking about doing something totally different.
We're thinking about making sure that the Finance Committee and the county council, before you take any action on this, has the correct numbers and a full understanding of what has the history of this transaction. And that is not clear from the present package and the materials that was presented previously, and we've done additional work, in-depth work on that, and we'll be glad to discuss that with the council at the Finance Committee meeting next Monday.
Any further comments? Okay, we will vote with the clerk of council, please call the roll. Mr. Hervishon will go first, and then Mr. McKellen, and then the rest of the council will vote.
Councilmember Hervishon?
Yes.
McKellen?
McKellen?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Flouelling?
No.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
No.
Vice Chair Somerville?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
Motion passes, eight-two.
Eight-two. All right, item number eighteen is a first reading of an ordinance to provide maintenance work on private roads. May I have such a motion, please?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Glover makes the motion, a second?
Second.
Mr. Somerville makes the second. Discussion, Mr. Glover, you may go first.
Sure, thank you. This has been a, an issue that is very important for people in rural, particular rural communities. And it's one where emergency access at this time is impaired because of the condition of the road. And although it's a private road, and in some cases, residents in that area prefer it to be a county road, because you cannot have, you don't have everybody in consent to have it as a county road. They're having difficulty having maintenance there. And it is one where folks really can't afford at this time to really repair their roads at all. However, there is very limited access, and there are times when the emergency and the fire EMS refuse to go down to service. And so this here is a one-time emergency effort to basically bring the road up to a point where at least emergency vehicles can get there. That's the only thing that this will allow. An opportunity for the county to go in, find a need that exists, and people really cannot have access to emergency vehicles because of the condition of the road. The county will then go in there and maintain that at a minimum, which would allow for emergency vehicles to have access to that. It also would allow for family members who have cemeteries in isolated areas, at least have an opportunity to get in to bury their loved ones. And so it is really being controlled by the county administrator. It is done in a way that it really emphasizes emergency, emergency, emergency. Mr. Greenway, you wanna speak some more to that?
You did very well, I have nothing to add, thank you.
Yeah, it is not open to the general public for, who have private roads, who can actually fix their roads. It is not one where the county would actually go into a private road and start maintaining. It's only for emergency access only. Thank you.
Okay, that now answers your question. Yes, yes. Yes, Mr. Lawson?
Yes, I understand the concept of this, however, I will be voting against this. Couple of things that this ordinance is missing is the limit of the dollar amount that we spent in a one-time occurrence. It is limited in the fact that we don't know how much money we're gonna spend every year, whether that's gonna be ten thousand, hundred thousand, or a million dollars at the end of the year, because it's an unending or open amount. And we should be, if we're going to do this, we should be charging the homeowners that live on that street, because I'm sure some of them can possibly afford. If for some reason they can't afford, well then we can make it available that they could ask for forgiveness. So those four things, but even if you made those changes to this ordinance, I do not think that public money should be spent on private roads. It's something that, that's one of the biggest no-no's that in the government that we should do, is just take public money and spend it on private roads. Again, I understand the concept, but again, we're opening up a can of worms, opening up Pandora's box when it comes to maintaining and fixing private roads, which is not our responsibility.
Any other comments? Mr. Hervishon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I share Councilman Lawson's concerns as far as the government going into private property and spending public funds. The other thing, in addition to what Councilman Lawson said, that I don't see in here, and somebody, correct me if I'm wrong, but just the red line of when do we go in, when do we not go in? What's that demarcation line, what's too much, what's not enough? How does that work? So I'm gonna vote against this at first reading, but if we get that clarification, and if it seems to make sense, I reserve the right to change my mind, but that's where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to comment that I think this has been worked on for a long time. It used to be a handshake in the county, I can remember that, and roads were worked on. But staff has worked really hard on the conditions. There's seven things outlined, I think, total, on when they will and when they will not do it. And so I am going to support this, because I think this is about as specific as we can get and still provide a service to people who, in an emergency, are gonna need it. Thank you.
Mr. Rodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I first started thinking about this, I thought that the concept was fairly compelling when you think about public safety. However, as I continue to research it and talk to the legal staff, essentially this violates South Carolina law, which says you can't spend money on private areas. As much as I would like to figure out a way to do this, and maybe we can figure out a way to do it, I think state law trumps what we can do. And so for that reason, I'm gonna have to vote against it, as much as I agree with the concept, and I think it's a worthwhile expenditure. But I do believe that state law trumps.
Mr. McKellen, you haven't weighed in?
No, I haven't, but I know that the statutory prohibition exists, and I don't see any exception there for anything in the statute. Am I wrong about that, Tom?
It's the Constitution, you can't use public funds on private property.
You can use it for emergency or anything.
There's no exception. Public purpose.
Mr. Somerville, do you wish to make any comment?
Yeah, I do, I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has been a problem for, as long as I've been on council, that is to say, there are roads that are private for many different reasons. Some because some residents don't want them to be, to be public roads. Others are just belong to somebody. But the question is, what do we do, what is our obligation? If that person needs an emergency service, whether it's a police car, whether it's a fire truck, or whether it's an ambulance, do we have an obligation to make sure that that vehicle gets to that person, regardless of the ownership of the road? I think that's the real, that's the issue in my mind. And I believe we do have that obligation. On the other hand, I don't wanna pass any ordinance that allows a private road to use public money to do what they should do to maintain their own roads. So there has to be some middle ground, and I think we've found it. I've read this ordinance as proposed carefully, several times with a highlighter in my hand, and I'm convinced that there are enough failsafes in this ordinance to make sure that somebody can't game this ordinance and just come at a whim and say, hey, come out here and grade my road, because that is absolutely, clearly against the law, and absolutely, clearly not the intent of this ordinance. So I'm gonna support it, because I believe that, and I think if anybody reads this carefully as I have, I think you'll agree, I hope you'll agree, that there's enough failsafes in here that it can't be gamed. So I'm gonna support it on that basis, thank you.
Mr. Flouelling, you had your hand up?
That was actually in relation to the previous item, sir, I'll go ahead and remove that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I'm not mistaken, I think in drafting this ordinance, staff actually obtained languages from at least three or four counties in the state of South Carolina. So they're doing it in other counties. It's the same state, same statute, same constitution, but it's for emergency purpose only.
Yeah, if I might elaborate a little bit, everyone that has spoken on the issue regarding state law is technically correct. However, I believe that the state law, the purpose and intent of that law is to keep people from doing things that are egregious, like the Public Works Director sending the Public Works crew out to pave his private driveway to his home, and things like that. Or another county employee requesting that the county come and do work on their property, or various other public official abuses that we are all too familiar with. County council is charged with adopting rules and regulations, ordinances and policies that are designed to protect the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of the county. The county allows people, through our development standards, to, through the use of family compound provisions and other mechanisms, to place multiple dwellings on the same piece of property without any regard to access to how those folks that might live on those properties might be able to get to and from, or in the case of a fire, how a fire truck might be able to get to provide a public safety service to putting out that fire. In addition to that, in the Low Country of South Carolina, we also have the complications of Irish property, where you have multiple owners and chain title, and everyone has, might have an interest in that home. And again, community development codes and zoning regulations make special provisions in consideration to once again allow multiple dwellings on property without any provision for public roads to be done. So I'm comfortable in recommending this policy to you all. It will have limited application, it will be used infrequently, and it's a one-time obligation of the county to bring up certain roads to a passable standard to withstand the weight of a fire truck, and to make sure that the road is graded such that we can get an ambulance, which is relatively low to the ground for various reasons, down that road to someone's house in an emergency. As told you all at the committee meeting, we have one situation whereby if we get called, and there is a lady or a person that lives on that road, that if they call the ambulance, they have to bring that person out to the nearest public street because we can't get an ambulance back to the actual house. So this will have limited application, I will not let it be abused. If you all adopt it, and as the county administrator, other jurisdictions in the state of South Carolina have similar provisions in their code. And who knows, if those were to be challenged, what would happen in those particular cases, as to whether or not you could withstand the challenge. But I'm willing, because I think it's the right thing to do for the public good, for public safety, to take that chance in a court of law. If we have to undo the ordinance later on, or the policy later on, then we certainly can do that if we ever got a challenge. But it's been my experience in my career, my twenty-eight or twenty-nine-year local government career, that very seldom are you challenged in court for telling somebody, yes, we can help you with that issue. It's usually when you tell them, no. So that's my little three-minute speech.
Okay, and this is the first reading. We will have more discussions on this, there may have to be some refinements, but we'll get through that. Okay, do I need to call the roll?
Can you make a public comment on that agenda?
No, sir. Okay, I will ask the clerk to call the roll. Mr. Glover made the motion, and Mr. Somerville made the second.
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Council, Vice Chair Somerville?
Council, Vice Chair Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Fluehling?
Yes.
Councilmember McKellen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, no.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodman?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote yes, Mr. Chairman, but I would like to get a little more educated as we go forward on what's happening in the other counties, but I would be wanting to keep this open for discussion.
Councilmember Hervishon?
No.
Chairman Passamet?
Yes.
Seven-three.
Seven-three. Item number 19 is first reading of an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of the right-of-way known as 16th Street Extension and a related drainage easement to the town of Port Royal. May I have such a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to pass this ordinance.
Ms. Howard makes the motion. A second, please.
I'll second.
Mr. Glover makes the second, duly motioned and second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be done without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 20 is the first reading of an ordinance providing authorization for golf carts to use multi-use trails and paths. May I have such a motion, please?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion. A second.
I'll make the second for discussion.
Okay, Mr. Hervishon makes the second. Duly motioned and second. Mr. Cunningham, you made the motion, you get to speak first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, first off, why this came about? Two years ago, I started running a campaign, and this is one of the things that I put out there, was this something that the neighborhoods that I represented were interested in seeing. I overwhelmingly had positive feedback, over 80 percent, so it is something that I said I would bring forward, and it is still something that I support. As somebody that uses this, this walkway to walk and cycle on, I understand what it looks like, I understand the dynamics of the area. To clear up a couple of things, it is only the Bluffton Parkway and Buckwalter, which means 170 is not even on the table, so it does not have access to Sun City. To address a couple of the questions and concerns, safety is always something that obviously came to the mind of me when we brought this forward, just like the safety of when golf carts are driving on the road, or when bicycles are riding on the road. Your group rides on the road, and I believe we've had a couple accidents before. We've also had accidents of cyclists on sidewalks and walkers, and recently, unfortunately, we even had a golf cart in Old Town Bluffton that was on the road, that is legally allowed to be there, that got sideswiped the other day. This is real things. There are things you can prevent, things you can't prevent, there are people that break the law, and there are times you can't stop people from breaking the law. But what I can tell you is, we do take safety as one of the issues. Golf carts do go between 15 and 20 miles an hour. Some of them, yes, people have them souped up and they go 25. The average cyclist who would use that sidewalk as well, or the street, can go 15 to 25 miles an hour, depending on their distance as well. That is average. So, that cyclist on that golf cart path is the same speed that that golf cart could be on that path if they chose to use it. As for the question about schools and driving golf carts to schools, high schools dictate who gets to park in their parking lot, you have to have a parking pass and approved by them. Technically, May River High School has the ability currently, right now, to have golf carts in their parking lot, with all those residential communities on a street under 35 miles an hour, which is not an issue that I've seen they had, and I'm sure the school district could easily prevent golf cart parking on their school, just like they prevent other cars, and the type of things that are on cars for students in school. The average sidewalk for walkers and bikers is supposed to be four feet. The recommendation is somewhere between four and four and a half. Ours, as you correctly stated, are throughout the county, are seven to nine and a half. The average recommendation for golf carts is seven. So, that is why this, these are the only two trails that even meet the requirements in Beaufort County, outside of one on, in Beaufort, that we've excluded from this. These are the only pathways that are actually even accessible to these golf carts. The reason behind me pushing this wasn't to push a safety issue or anything like that, it's more about connectivity. In Beaufort, people drive their golf carts on the road, in downtown Beaufort. In downtown Bluffton, they drive their golf carts there. Hilton Head, inside your gated communities, you guys drive your golf carts, and I understand that is done by the speed limit. I understand Hilton Head does not allow them on their cart pass, which we are not trying to push that at all. These are these two roads. This is District 7, it's the area I represent. It is the fastest-growing district in Beaufort County. To show that, 10,000 residents were just moved out of my district in the rezoning, because I was 9,000 residents over any other district, to bring down to the same par. That's how fast it's growing. We have a lot of commercial space. We have Washington Square that's going up, we have the movie theater complex, we have Buckwalter Place, then of course, we have, if you wanna go down from the Bluffton Parkway, you have over by Red Cedar Elementary, multiple uses over there. They have the connectivity to Old Town Bluffton, 'cause you're correct, three miles is the limit, but it's to give those people that access and the opportunity to share the same type of living and opportunities that you have in downtown Beaufort, or downtown Bluffton, or even in Sun City. I go to Cracker Barrel every single Wednesday morning, and I park right over there by the golf cart parking. I think it's genius, I think it's a great idea to have that accessibility. Unfortunately, I will tell you, people are breaking the law right now, and already driving their golf carts on there. They're parked over where I work all the time. But with this moving forward, if we were able to bring this to the second reading, which would be our public comment, which would be able to get all sides of people for and against, 'cause public comment wasn't necessarily today, but thankfully, we did have people that made the drive-out today to speak on it, that this gives us the opportunity to at least put it on the table for people, to have that connectivity. If people wanna drop their kids off at school, their elementary school using their golf cart, or if Hampton Lake wants to be able to drive right over to the grocery store, Publix is right there, Kroger's right there, the movie theater, it, it gives us the connectivity and the access to enjoy the same type of benefits that other parts of Beaufort County have. Lowering the speed limit to 35 doesn't seem like an ideal option on that road. So, that is where it came, but I will say that there are some requirements for it. Every golf cart has to be registered, everybody driving that golf cart has to be a licensed driver, it must have headlights, and turn signals, and brake lights to even operate on these, because safety is one of those things. One of the things I also discussed that we, if we get this moving forward and get enough support, is I would love to get together with the administration team and the film team, and we make an educational video of what is the right way to drive on that golf cart, on that path? Who yields? Who doesn't yield? And then eventually, if we do see we need to have enhancements in certain areas, it's something that I'd be willing to support. So, my argument today is to move it to second reading to get it to public comment, so we can have a full public comment and discussion on it, and get all the information out. There are other areas that have already done this, it's been successful, Charleston does it right now, there's places in Georgia that do it. One that I've looked a lot on right now is Fayette, Georgia, and they have an entire golf cart system throughout their entire county, and maybe this is step one, maybe it's a bad idea, maybe it's a great idea, but I think given the option to go to discussion is where we have to start with it, to see what's the right way of going about, going about doing this with this connectivity. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other comments? Ms. Howard?
Mr. Chairman, even though our package had Spanish Moss Trail still in it, it has been removed from it, but I got a lot of comments from people who were concerned about not only Spanish Moss Trail, but any trail, because of safety, and to the person who spoke up about Peachtree City, that was well said, because that is no longer used, my understanding, by bicyclists or pedestrians, or people with children in strollers, it's become a golf course, I mean, a golf cart path. I, I would like us to look more at lowering the speed limit, that doesn't seem to be an option, and I had a question for Councilman Cunningham. Has law enforcement reviewed this, and what were their comments?
As far as I know, law enforcement has not reviewed it, but I can tell you that they have been being used for years, and there has not been a problem to this point. Actually, Pine Crest uses our bike trails that the county put in place to get from one part of their golf course to the other side on the back nine. They have, partially is their own underneath the bridge that the county paid to go underneath, but the rest of the road they used is ours to actually get to the other side, and it's never been an issue to this point.
Can I make one more comment?
Yes.
I, I live in Mossy Oaks area, and we are allowed to use golf carts within three miles, but it is a 35 mile an hour area, just as downtown Beaufort is, and it works well, but again, it's 35 mile an hour limit.
Mr. Lawson?
Good, and Logan, I love your brother, I don't wanna say son, because I'm not that old, but actually, I did a daughter your age, but, um, let me just say that I will vote to move this forward to public comment. I am against it, but again, I'll move it forward so we can get to discussion, what's going on. I applaud your enthusiasm about this, and about trying to get more golf carts out there. However, after driving up and down Buckwalter, and driving up and down the Bluffton Parkway, there are places that there's barely enough room for one golf cart to get by, two golf carts are impossible, they can't pass each other. That's not every place, but just those few bottlenecks would happen, but my biggest concern is, is on the way home today, tomorrow, if you go and look at those intersections where you've got the Bluffton Parkway and Buckwalter coming together, there is no way that a golf cart can use the crosswalk. Those are all curbs there, you have six-inch curbs, they have to come down the handicap ramp. Those handicap ramps are set up at a 45-degree angle, so if they come down off that 45-degree angle, they're right out in traffic. This is a safety issue, so without figuring out how to rework those intersections, without figuring out how they're gonna get around the Bluffton Circle there at the Bluffton Parkway and Bluffton Road, that, that is my biggest concern, is that someone will get killed unless we have safety things in place before this is passed, not after we pass it to see if it works. All those things must be done before we pass this. Again, those intersections scare me to death, and I, I've gone out and looked at it, and again, tomorrow, I, I ask you all to, to look at those intersections we're talking about for a golf cart to come off that curb and try to cross over. But again, I'm with you for us to find a solution to get more golf carts on the road, on paths or whatever, but I do not think this is the, the right place or the right time for Bluffton Parkway or the Buckwalter Parkway.
Any other comments? Mr. Rodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, when you think about the weight and the speed of the golf carts, it's hard to overcome the safety argument, because it's just a matter of time until there's some serious accidents, and perhaps fatalities. So, for that reason, I would find it very difficult to vote for this.
May I comment that?
Sure.
Mr. Rodman, wouldn't that same argument be able to be made for the people that use their carts on the road against cars in Old Town Bluffton and downtown Beaufort?
I think the state law is 35 miles an hour, right, until you can use that.
Correct, but a golf cart against a car is...
Is an only in search of...
Exactly.
But, that is, that is state law, it allows that, with motorized vehicles. I, I do understand that a car is heavier and can go faster than a golf cart, but that's, that argument doesn't lead you to the point to say, "Okay, it's safe on paths." It may both be unsafe, but it doesn't mean that it's safe on trails and paths.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Hold on a second, Mr. Fluehling. Mr. Glover is speaking, and then I'll recognize you.
Well, yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, um, I voted to support golf carts on the Fusky, and I figured that if any place in the county could make it work, it'd be the Fusky, so I supported that. Right now, I'm questioning, or I've been told that there are some issues on the Fusky with golf carts, safety being one of them, children, and other, I'm not gonna even call the, you know, the reasons, but other reasons for the safety issue on the Fusky. I, I'm gonna stick with staff recommendation at this time. Staff basically advise us, not because we have not really planned for golf carts, so I'm just gonna stick with staff recommendation going forward. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Fluehling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the difference between golf carts using roadways and golf carts using pathways is that the car, which has the, the mass and weight and speed, is, that road is designed for them, and the golf carts are using them kind of like an add-on, and so they're, really the owner of the golf cart, the operator, is taking, taking the risk at their risk, it's, it's their risk. I think when you use the pathways, the, the people who are pedestrians and bicyclists, they have the preeminent use, and yet, they're the ones at risk when the golf carts come on. And so, for that reason, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against the slogan, although I, you know, I appreciate your enthusiasm as well, and, and good luck.
Okay. Mr. Hervishon?
Sorry, just to Mr. Glover's point, staff recommendation was to adopt the ordinance, not to disprove...
Oh, really?
As our agenda online. Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm looking at, I'm looking at a memo right here from Mr. Greenway, but anyway...
Yeah. Mr. Hervishon, your final comment before we have to take action to extend the meeting?
Yes, sir, and I'll, I'll make that motion when I'm done, if you don't mind. I think this is a very interesting issue, and I can see both sides of it. I very much respect Councilman Cunningham's stance on this issue, because I know that he's done his homework over several years at this point. Where I am at the moment is that I would like to see this get to second reading, I would like to see public comment, I would like to see both sides of it, I would like for staff to reach out to law enforcement and get an opinion, their opinion, not only because of this issue, which is a limited part of Beaufort County, but also because I think it could be instructive in informing the conversation going forward in this area and in other areas, so I think that would be an instructive exercise for us to, to do, but I hear the, the safety issue loud and clear, so at the moment, I'm gonna vote for this, just to get it to second reading and, and hear some more, and with that, I would like to make a motion to extend past the eight o'clock hour.
I'll second.
Okay, motioned and seconded to go past the eight o'clock hour. Any objection? I see no objections, the meeting will carry on after the eight o'clock hour. Do I need to call the roll for...
Mr. Chairman, I've had my hand up for a good while.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Somerville.
That's all right, yeah, I, I'll make a quick comment. When this first, was first introduced, for the trails to allow, the trails plural, to allow golf carts, my, I reacted vehemently against it, and I said it defeats the whole purpose, in my view, of, of a walking or bicycling path, but secondly, it's very, very dangerous. What I didn't know at the time, I only knew about the Spanish Moss Trail, I didn't know about these other paths specifically, I didn't know how wide they were, but somebody has very kindly told me that tonight. Spanish Moss Trail is 10 feet wide, and these, it sounds like these are narrower than the Spanish Moss Trail, so I'm gonna absolutely vote against, against this motion, the, the motion to allow golf carts on these paths.
Okay. Will the clerk call the roll? Mr. Cunningham made the motion, and Ms. Howard made the second.
No, I did.
I did, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hervishon. I didn't put a G, I put HO.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Hervishon?
Yes.
Councilmember Fluehling?
No.
Councilmember McKellen?
I don't think this has a chance of passing, ever, but I would like to move it along for a public hearing to find out what the public wants us to do with regard to this, so I'll, I'll vote to move it to a second, a second, second hearing.
Councilmember Lawson?
That's a yes.
I, I got a yes, I, I figured it out.
Mark Lawson, same thing, I'd like to move it to public hearing, so yes, it's a vote to move it forward.
Councilmember Howard?
No.
Councilmember Rodman?
No.
Councilmember Glover?
No.
Vice Chair Somerville?
No.
Chairman Passamet?
I'm going to say yes, but in saying yes, we have a tie, and a tie does not move it forward. Item number 21, first reading of an ordinance establishing the Beaufort County Green Space Program Ordinance, and setting forth the methods by which the county council intends to procure open lands and green space... open lands and green space for the preservation, subject to a referendum within Beaufort County pursuant to section 4-10-1010 et sec of the Code of Laws of South Carolina 1976 as amended. A motion, please.
So moved.
Mr. McKellen made the motion. Who made the second?
Second.
Mr. Hervishan made the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be done without objection, and I see no objections.
Oh, no, I have an objection, Mr. Chairman, if we would, please. I'd rather, I'd rather vote individually on this.
Okay, he's called the question. Will the clerk read the roll, please, beginning with Mr. McKellen and then going to Mr. Hervishan?
Vote yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Hervishan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Flueheling?
No.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Vice Chair Somerville?
Yes.
Chairman Passamet?
Yes.
Nine one, motion passes.
Final action item is an approval of a resolution approving the hiring of an additional full-time employee in the public defender's office to serve Colleton County. Mr. McKellen made the motion?
Second.
Mr. Glover made the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this...
Sir, question, if I might?
Yes.
Just to confirm, this is going to be Colleton County funds?
Yes.
And it'll only, it'll only be employee as long as Colleton County funds it.
Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Mr. Somerville, your hand is up. Are you asking a question about this?
Mr. Chairman, my hand is up because I haven't learned how to lower it. There, there we go.
Excellent. Duly motioned, seconded. I, I will have this passed without objection, and I see no objections. Okay, we are now at the citizens' comments. We, it is now 8:01. We will allow 20-minute time for you to let us know what's on your mind. So please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Mary Moyd, and I live on Sam's Point Road on Ladies Island. It's now called, Sam's Point Road is now the Audubon of Ladies Island. There, there's no control. I, I, when that was put, when Oyster Bluff, Oyster Cove, whatever it's called, was put there, there was no consideration taken for the people that live on the other side of the highway. I live in my driveway, which is Moyd Lane. There are four houses. We had to move the mailbox because when people are on that highway, the lady was afraid to stop and put the mail out there. We moved it inside. Now, I went to a meeting last week, and from Sunset, Sunset Bluff, all the traffic, they, they're doing something with the traffic on Ladies Island, and it's all pointing towards Sam's Point Road, and it's right between Factory Creek Road and Wallace Road. And where do we live? I live right in the midst of all of that. My father fought for years to have them to not put all those houses over there. Now, there was supposed to be two entrances, entrance off of Sunset Bluff. That never happened. And where did the gas station comes from? And where did you put it? You forced the people that live there to have to take a chance coming out. It takes me anywhere from five to 17 minutes on a daily basis to get out. I've gotten to the point I have to turn right instead of turning left, and then you put a median in the middle of the highway. That is, that is crazy. And now you've got all the traffic from Sunset coming towards Sam's Point Road. I don't know who the architect was, and I don't know who did it, but I'm going to tell you right now, something needs to be done because you will see my happy face until something is done. I mean, that is crazy. I, look, I, it, it's very upsetting. It's very upsetting. That is, that's ridiculous. And I know that I, I came home, I retired from the military, came home 24 years ago, and I didn't have time to look at all of this, but I've got time now. And county council, I'm going to help you. I'm not going to be a thorn in your side, but you're going to know that I'm here, and Sam's Point Road needs to be fixed. I'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Grace Smith. I live at 11 Weilers Creek Way on Hilton Head Island. First, Mr. Rodman, I need to inform you that the process has been started by the action of contacting the Assuredy Bond Company that guarantees your bond of filing a claim against you. The company should be contacting you shortly with the particulars of our complaint. Second, I need to inform the rest of the county council members present here that any of your constituents that you see here could execute the same filing of a complaint against you. Third, as can be seen by the attendance here tonight, there has been a very sizable reaction among we, the Hilton Head residents, to the proposal made during the county council public facilities committee meeting to split off the bridge construction part of the project and dump four or five lanes of traffic onto eastbound 278 right as it approaches Windmill Harbor. This is ill-advised and very possibly illegal, and the proposal should go no further. I listened to the relevant portion of your public facilities meeting on August 22nd. There was not one word given to address the aesthetic concerns of having a currently beautiful bridge entrance to one of the most singular and ecologically spectacular islands on the east coast, replaced with an 11-lane aircraft carrier-looking unibridge. No consideration whatsoever given to the very real concerns of we, the residents of Hilton Head, as to the aesthetics and future, indeed even the future of tourism, if you think about it, on our island. And you claim to represent the best interests of your constituents? Surely not the ones on Hilton Head Island, you don't. Why would you even entertain the possible huge alteration in the 278 corridor project when there is no evidence that having an 11-lane-wide, single-span bridge that dumps all the traffic onto Hilton Head will do anything but significantly make the current peak traffic flow problem geometrically worse? Even SCDOT says that the best results to be expected after the expenditure of between a third and a half a billion dollars is to move the peak traffic rating from an F to a D. Mr. Rodman's proposal is likely to move the rating from an F to an F minus. We, the residents of Hilton Head Island, are very encouraged when our town council agreed to the two significant steps of implementation of the adaptive traffic light system and the hiring of a truly, finely independent traffic engineering consultant. As Senator Davis has told you time and again, Christie Hall has assured him that Hilton Head can take all the time it needs to get this independent study done right, and that the money will be there when it is time to do the project the right way, truly from end to end. Please get back to the board with the, get back on board with this approach, as you were at one time, and accomplish this project with all the proper expert input, and don't subject Hilton Head Island to a giant overbuilt bridge structure that will destroy forever the unique and beautiful entrance we all now enjoy. Thank you.
I thought we all signed up. I thought we all signed up. Are you not just calling this in order?
No.
Just jump up?
Yes, please.
That's not very organized, I think.
No, we, we want to hear from you. Please line up and let us know what you're thinking.
The clock's ticking.
Yeah, the clock's ticking. Go ahead, sir.
Can I get my time back?
Yeah, start.
I'm Chuck Newton. It seems like it's infrastructure night here tonight. I'm Chuck Newton, chairman of the Sea Island Corridor Coalition. I'm here because I know you're doing, I want to speak to you about the Sea Island Parkway proposal before Public Facilities Committee on August 22nd, and this proposal to four-lane that particular thoroughfare. I wanted to get here early because I know that there's engineering and design and further considerations being undertaken, and we want to be in a position where we can talk about the option as opposed to talking about how we might implement the option, which is the case if things go too far too fast. You know, our goal, our goal of the coalition is to advocate for smart development so Ladies Island doesn't end up as another plain vanilla community with traffic whizzing through. In fact, the fundamental goal of the Ladies Island strategy is to change the place from a place that people come to rather than through, and develop the parkway to a more walkable, pedestrian-friendly neighborhood. Widening the parkway as proposed would kill any chance we have to achieve this. We know what four lanes look like, Sam's Point Road and Ladies Island Drive. Those that are mailing or calling you, and I know you've heard from a number of people, we had, there's a petition out there currently that's getting close to 700 signatures, are not just 1,000 or so concerned residents. We've spoken with almost all of the businesses, the business owners along the parkway, from Herb Gray at Greco to Chris Butler of Butler Marine to Tom Daniels of the Ladies Island Marina. Not one of them is in favor of this particular proposal, not one. Now, I'm here tonight to underscore the great outpouring of opposition to this widening plan, but you'll hear more for us as this proposal works its way through the process, and we hope it comes back to public facilities later this month. But I wanted tonight to do something special. I want to extend an invitation to those of you from the south abroad with little experience on Ladies Island to come out and take a tour with us. We're going to schedule a bus, and we'd like to issue an invitation for you to come over and take a ride around Ladies Island, so you actually have a chance to see and understand the area that you're dealing with here. Hopefully, we'll try and coordinate you individually the next few days with the specifics. We'll try and make it convenient for your schedules, and we hope you'll take us up on this offer. It's important that you understand Ladies Island before you make life-changing decisions for that place. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Before I start my three minutes, can I hand you some studies that I spent a lot of time on? Do you mind?
It's fine.
Can I get to see, can I read you to what it is, so everybody knows what these studies are?
Sure, go ahead.
So why One Resort stopped marketing to tourism? Why tourism can actually harm the community? Unsustainable tourism and growth, big city problems for small communities. Why One Road, I-95 increased our out-of-control development, and tourism is not sustainable? And then the last one is why no master land plan was never developed by our 30-year town manager, and then basically the kick-the-can-down-the-road officials and mayors, who are also builders, developers, lawyers, and realtors in conflict with their own horses in the race, has continued to cause our problems. So I think you'll find that very interesting. We do have 45,000 residents, but we have a couple of million, two million tourists coming into here, and we're out of control on this. So let me go ahead and read my speech, if I could. Thank you. So my name is Skip Poglen, Windmill Harbor. Past, present, and future, I lived here for 47 years, and like many, we chose Hilton Head for the clean environment and the Charles Fraser vision of low-density, high-end retirement and tourism destination, not the Myrtle Beach and Charleston big-city life. Yet nonstop overdevelopment, traffic never ends. Selfishness and greed always finds an excuse to justify profit over people and the environment. And what we don't need is more traffic on a single road, one bridge all the way to I-95. This $300 million bridge will mimic what a stent does for your heart, yet will do nothing but increase traffic islandwide, along with more runoff pollution that's already choking our creeks, our rivers, our estuaries, polluting the oysters in 30 years it took millions to create. Just fix the bridge and end the insanity. The powers-to-be that have had, have not had the horse sense of developing proper Hilton Head master land plan that would have stopped all this, including Bluffton, Beaufort, and Hardyville. This would have made living here more exclusive. Islands simply can't open the floodgates to all without a controlled and enforced master land plan. I repeat, we are heading for 10 pounds in a 5-pound bag. We're already at 5 or 6 pounds. Has anybody seen the traffic and what's happened in the last few years? I blame the kick-the-can-down-the-road elected officials who haven't a clue on how to balance responsible growth while maintaining the natural environment that drew them here. And now, they have fobbed off their responsibility to remediate the damage on the folks at South Carolina DOT and blame others. The traffic and overdevelopment has already caused some longtime residents, businesses, and tourists to leave this place. We are all keep electing part-time mayors who are builders, developers, real estate agents, lawyers, and incompetent big spenders, retired executives who have mastered revolving-door leadership positions that stroke their own egos while doing as much harm as possible to once was a most, a most majestic landscape. These same elected officials are aided and abetted by unscrupulous dishonest lawyers who rather line their pockets by overcharging tax-paid legal fees. Google overcharged legal fees on Hilton Head. And these town lawyers have the same horses in the development race as the elected officials, creating huge conflicts with their real estate and development clients. These unethical lawyers include Finger, Coltrane, Alfred, and serial ethics violator Josh Gruber. We also have dishonest, compromised town managers and CPAs who avoid forensic audits that would confirm their illegal tax use we have identified. Now, with the mass exodus of many from big cities to our area, it's only going to get worse, and we're going to be in assured 10 pounds in a 5-pound bag. Sadly, if we had developed a master land plan 45, 50 years ago when I moved here, we would not have this traffic, environment, and affordable housing problem. We could have, we could have controlled it. It's just like any gated community, any gated community. You have a master land plan, and when it's, when you're, when you're full, you're full, and you don't build anymore. That's it. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Frank Mengen. I live here on Hilton Head Island. I'm speaking for myself. When you read that statement before, you referenced the four years of planning that's been going on for this whole thing. I wonder if I could add another statistic, another fact to that. I call it 50 days. Up until a couple of days ago, I think it was last Thursday, you were going to come here tonight and vote on the plan, the proposition that Stu Rodman authored and put before you. Yet in 50 days, this is an election year. In 50 days, there's going to be a different look to the town council, to the county council. So I really wonder, why are you rushing ahead to jam down something that is going to be voted on now September 26th, I understand, before the new town, I'm sorry, the new county council takes place? Why are you going to bind them to something that that council has not had input in? We all know, we can guarantee several positions are going to be different in the next 50 days. I think it might be more than just a couple, okay? So I'd like you to take that into consideration. I also find it very, very, very disheartening to use the phrase, that the author of the proposal, who is not going to be an incumbent in 50 days, was the person who authored it, presented it to you, and got people to sign up for it. I'm not going to demean this fellow. It's already been proven that he's been taken from positions of leadership and demoted by the town council. He's also been not, not, let's just say he hasn't been fully accredited with his, with some of the things he's done by a whole raft of people who, in the last, former council members, former executives down here in politics. Maybe he's not the right person to be authoring these kinds of, these things. And if so, why are you forcing this decision on a town, I'm sorry, on a county committee that is not going to be in office in 50 days? That's not correct. That's not democratic. It's not what we signed up for. Thank you very much.
Just so everybody knows, when I told you in here, there is an MOU on the table between the administration of the township and the administration of county council to move forward, accepting what has been done so that we can have the project go together hand in hand. It doesn't stop town council from going ahead and doing their end-to-end study. It doesn't stop town council from making any aesthetic things that they want to do. All of that is going to be part and parcel of moving forward. There are federal... There are federal regulations we have no control over. That's why it is one bridge. That's why the bridge is put up the way it is. The federal government dictates that. We don't have control over that.
Thank you, and with no disrespect intended, I'm going to tell you that I believe what Senator Davis tells us, and is talking to us openly in various meetings, rather than I'm going to accept what you put into your...
That's fine. That's fine. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, I'll be brief. John Casey, 613 Colonial Drive, Hilton Head. I appreciated the synopsis that the chairman gave on behalf of the commission at the outset of the meeting because it made it very clear that simply standing up here and telling you not to proceed was not going to have any influence on the commission, that they had very much made up their mind. But I will also tell you that regardless of what the Corps of Engineers may say now is what they're interested in when a project touches upon a national wildlife area and when it touches upon the waters of the United States and indeed the Atlantic Intercoastal Waterway, that the casebooks, I had occasion in another life in a very different state to deal with some very large highway expansion projects, well-planned, ready to go, and the federal courts have very consistently, under NEPA, thrown these projects back because an objector and their comments, a stakeholder, was not properly considered. I understand the chairman is saying that he believes that's happening. I think there's a substantial disagreement in that regard, but it seems to me this is one of those situations where running forward rapidly will only put us back both in time and money, and then put the project at a greater risk. Thank you.
Anyone else before, please come up? Let it go a little longer.
My name's Kristen Lukan. I live in Windmill Harbor, and I guess I just don't, I just moved here four years ago, and I love it. And I came down here before I retired because, you know, I wanted, it's so beautiful here, and I wanted to have a great, you know, life earlier than coming down at retirement. And so I bought a house in Windmill Harbor with my husband, and we're enjoying it. It's beautiful in there. But when I sit outside, I can hear some of the traffic coming down. And then when I found out that, you know, it's going to be this 10-lane bridge, and on our side, and taking up part of Windmill Harbor, and the jake breaking, that's going to happen with the light there, with all the trucks coming down, it's really going to ruin everything in Windmill Harbor. I mean, you can hear it because of the water, you know, it's, I don't know, because we're not Hilton Head, you know, maybe you guys don't care, but it's, it's going to be ugly. And when I asked somebody about it, I don't remember who it was when I was at the high school, they said that, oh, don't worry, we're going to make it stamped concrete so it's pretty for you. And it's like going to buy a car. Oh, they always show the woman, here's the mirror. You have the mirror. I felt, I don't know. That's it.
Thank you all for coming. Any further action from county council? Our meeting is adjourned.